It's about you.
Yes, and then then two years for two weeks.
Okay, good evening, everyone. I would like to call the village of Lanin Board Meeting to order for July fourteenth, twenty twenty five to seven P M. Everyone with silence their phones, move their head here and stance the Fledge of Allegiance.
One of the citizens who I have to say so very good. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in this world, the liberty of justice for all.
Roll call. Batiste.
Here.
Reneer.
Here.
Lake.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Summers.
Here.
Willard.
Here.
And Yates is present, all present. Item four, Statement of Public Notice.
I'm posted.
Thank you. Committee reports, finance and personnel.
I'm here.
Oh, excuse me, discussion, possible action on reading. Checking too fast. Reading correction and approval of the minutes from the six nine twenty five village board meeting.
I have one exception. And that's on the second page. And there was a gentleman sitting in the audience that stated that had he known, he would have, he would have changed his vote for the referendum here in the presentation. So it did not note that it came from that gentleman. It kind of looks like it came from me and I didn't say that. So if we could insert that person's name, I'm happy.
Did we have any other comments or corrections to the minutes?
I will make a motion that we accept the minutes as presented from for May twelfth, twenty twenty five with the adjustment that Mr. Willard had just recommended.
I second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any other discussion? I would just ask one follow up thing. Brendan, did any of the applicants that we ended up not approving for some of the licenses reapply?
They're working on it.
I'm sorry?
They're working on it.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries to approve the minutes. Now we'll get to the committee reports. Finance and Personnel.
We'll cover under number sixteen.
Thank you. Legislative?
Nothing to report other than we're going to change village ordinance to the lineup of the state statute. That'll appear in the fifteen, number fifteen on the agenda.
Thank you. Parks and Rec and Beautification?
Well, I didn't have anything, but Gloria is here tonight. And Gloria, your flowers look lovely. So we'd like to thank you.
What you're sharing, are you speaking my?
Well, all of them.
So somebody watering them?
I believe Gloria is watering them. They just leave.
Oh, okay.
That's your heart. Thank you, Gloria.
Just checking. I thought somebody would just do it because they work here.
Thank you.
Foolish, Sally.
Thank you, Gloria.
You're welcome.
Public Safety?
Just National Night Out is quickly approaching. So if anybody would like to donate or come visit, it would be greatly appreciated.
And that's August?
Thirteenth.
Thirteenth. Thank you. Public Works Recycling Sewer?
We have a complaint or a couple complaints that came in or potholes. We will be out servicing those later in August after baseball season. We have the availability to do so. We'll also address the shouldering on Forest View during that point in time as well.
Okay, thank you. Corey?
Just got a call from the last week because their cutoff is three o'clock. They were having issues and he asked if they could go to three fifteen. And I said, that's fine. That was in the best interest of Blast Crew and in my mind our village. So they are, if they blast late, they do call. And there is a sign up sheet that is out for Monticelli's. It alerts you to when they're gonna blast. So that's something that's here to stay and Landstone works very hard to cooperate with Village.
No, and you're referring to the Facebook group chat, right?
It's put out by Monticelli's. It's on Facebook. I stumbled on it.
Yeah.
And then I watched the comments on it where it's like, oh geez, they send a notice out. They live right next to it, never knew it, which is their goal. But that is, I was unaware of that until about a month and a half ago.
Yeah, so for the folks that are interested that are here or not here and watching remotely or recorded, there is a Facebook group. It's Lanin Blasting Awareness, I think it's called. Or Facebook Chat. Tony Monticelli can add you to that group chat if you're interested in getting those notifications. All right, Department of Reports, Clerk's Office.
Utility Bills did go out there due at the beginning of August, working on getting financials in order for the budget process. And that is all we have.
Police Department?
Trustee Moore already hit on the National Night Out coming up on Wednesday, August thirteenth from five to eight at the Park by the Lion Center. Also coming up on July twenty ninth, a bunch of us, police officers are going to be manning the counter at Culvers to raise money for the police lights of Christmas, which is then reinvested into the community here. We distributed twelve hundred and fifty dollars to five D families last year from that fund. So we could use some support at the Culvers on Ivy one sixty four in Silver Spring in Sussex. From ten A M. to ten P M. One of us should be there on July twenty ninth.
Ten to ten?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Chief. Item number eight, response to previous citizens' comments. We had some comments from mismanagement regarding the park maintenance, which I believe I now understand where that, those comments came from. Just want to reassure her and the rest of the community, there is no ongoing talks of discontinuing our maintenance of the Hallquist property over here that gets used for the car show. There was simply some comments made that were in response to a citizen complaint that they don't get the benefit of the same type of treatment for their property. And we had that discussion with him, myself separately, as well as trustee Lake, explain that situation. See, Dennis had asked about the land that's for sale. I think we talked about that a little bit at that meeting. I did receive a call last Thursday from a potential buyer. He informed me of the conversation that he had with a neighbor. He was supposed to send me an email with some follow up information and I did not ever hear from him. So I'm assuming he got run off. So we anticipate that to be a difficult item moving forward, but we are continuing to make efforts to sell that property. Speed in the Village from Jan again. Race track, something else that can be done, speed bumps for a few. This gets brought up a lot. We've had conversations with the chief about it. You know, we're in Wisconsin. It's tough. Speed bumps make it difficult for plowing. We've discussed ad nauseam the issues getting the fully staffed Police Department. We have limited staff. They're doing the best they can. I really don't know what else to say other than probably not going to stop anytime soon, just like everywhere else. But we will continue to investigate options and see if we can improve on it. Item number ten, discussion of possible action regarding proposals for geotech services on Bonnie Lane. Bless them, Mary. Item number nine, citizen comments. I'm sorry. Don Summers, never heard of him.
I have two comments. One is if you see my hair, our hair was two weeks from yesterday. Another comment I had had to do with another bachelor reporter that the chief had given us some information on. I was questioned. Can I refer this to you, Patrick, about what is brought up in hiring an officer? So just so you're aware that that's out there, I refer to.
Okay, thank you. I've had some discussions already with the finance and personnel folks and with the chiefs.
Thank you.
Any other citizen comments? Not even you, Lori?
I think you're all doing the one people job.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
Are these comments or questions?
Comments. You can ask a question, but we may or may not respond.
One of my questions is the active park land. If MIBS and VIBS is selling, would somebody consider offering that land for extra parking to them to purchase?
Possibly. That might come up as a, as an opportunity. Any other citizen comments? Did you, do you need a name and address?
Please. Janet Perry, P E R R Y two zero zero seven one, Old Stone Drive. Thank you.
Any other citizen comments? Okay, now we'll get back on track again. Item ten, discussion of possible action regarding proposals for geotech services on Bonnie Lane. Ben?
I ran off some extra copies that are a little larger with like one. With the proposal summary. All right. So Dan Batiste is the Public Works Committee Chair and Dan and Patrick and Jerry and I had a little handoff meeting shortly after Dan was elected. One of the pressing issues that came up was the need to do something about Bonnie Lane, the roads in peril shape. Step one to getting an accurate budget is getting some geotechnical boring stuff. The east end of the roadway especially is kind of in a low area and close to wetlands and the, there's issues with that road grade kind of heaving every winter and settling back down. Whatnot. So Bonnie Lane is one of the projects identified in the TIP two project plan. So any of the efforts spent here would be helpful to be reversed through TIP two. We solicited proposals for geotechnical boring here and we had three responses. Terricon was the highest. PSI has done work in Lanin before on, on the base price, which was just to do the boring's. And the ports, they were maybe eighty dollars less than Jestra, but they had two fewer boring's. And they didn't provide, in my mind, did provide a complete fossil. They didn't add the additional rock pouring price and the groundwater monitoring price. Therefore, I'm going to recommend Jestra for this work. I want to point out that Jestra has the most number of boring's at nine. And they suggest only going ten feet deep. We did tell each of the proposers that we want these boring's to go deep enough to get decent information on utility trenches in case water main were to go on Bonnie Lane also. Note that PSI's boring's were proposed to go fifteen feet deep in a lot of low lying areas in Lanin. They hit bog or refusal before they ever get to that depth. So a higher quantity of actual boring's, in my opinion, is more valuable than lesser boring's that go deeper. Also, ten feet is more than sufficient to go any proposed depth of construction.
Is it six feet for water main? Did we move below six feet?
We want sixteen to top the pipe for water main. So you know, you figure maybe a foot of pipe if you have a twelve inch and then we do a foot of bedding material under that. So bottom of trench for water main is usually around eight feet.
And did you have anything that you wanted to specifically add to the comments regarding this or?
No, nothing specifically. I, I think it's important to, I guess, note and also confirm that the funding or so boring is also through TIP two funds, correct?
Yep.
And then we would, they would proceed was, was it three weeks or so after notice to proceed?
Correct.
I think that's what I saw generally.
Okay.
And the intent here is that we could use that information to come up with an updated opinion of probable costs so that the board can consider if that's something you want to move in budget right away or handle differently.
Then is that where the water main would come into the backside of Colley property?
Yeah, and that's part of why this gets a little bit tricky. The road needs to be rebuilt yesterday. But you know, when Colley develops, they're going to bring water main through their property. They're going to stub it out to where Bonnie Lane ends right now. We want to avoid a situation, of course, where we're digging this road up in two or three years if it's going to get rebuilt. So, you know, that's some coordination to think about. And then keep rebuilding.
Okay, any other questions for Ben?
I have a question on, on Jestra's breakdown of geotechnical engineering, where they break down all those. This one?
Yeah.
On the first line, dally, drilling rate, is that a process or should I sort of say daily?
It should say daily.
I didn't know that was maybe.
But it's a great catch.
But I didn't know that was a special term.
No.
You do that right after the dilly drilling.
But I was, I read this and I'm like, they mean daily?
I bet you that got hundreds of proposals floating out there with that.
They probably do because it was down, it was down there farther down to the same time. So I'm like, maybe this is a machine.
Any other questions or discussion? Anybody care to put forth a motion?
I will put forth, I will put forth a motion that at the recommendation of our village engineer that we accept the Jestra geotechnical proposal for the Bonnie Lane project.
I will second.
We need to have any comment in there about all brands being assigned it or is that just inferred? Okay, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Make sure I get it right on here. Item number eleven, discussion of possible action regarding D N R required erosion control inspections. So again, this is probably you, Ben, and then Mr. Willard had also made a good catch on this that needs correcting.
Okay. In summary, Village is part of an urbanized area and so D N R has us under a municipal separate storm sewer report permit, which is M S four. One of the fine print requirements in the M S four permits is that for active construction sites that are larger than one acre, there are mandatory inspection intervals, mainly every forty five days for active construction sites. And this has just been a lapse, the village, village engineer, building inspector has not been doing this the entirety of having its M S four permit, which is over ten years. So we submit the annual reports in March. And these, the documentation is supposed to go along with that report. D N R reviews that every year. This year, we were contacted by D N R and they said they're looking at more of the finer details of these requirements and Lanins and the similar boat as several other communities, which is these kind of periodic inspections have not been taking place. And so they gave us, they said the lowest level of enforcement, which is just a notice of noncompliance and it required a follow up plan and they just want to see documentation that you're back into compliance. There's no fines or penalties, thankfully. Part of the hitch in the process is that Lanin issues erosion control permits through the building inspector. Building inspector does inspect erosion controls at these sites. But the documentation on the required D N R forms for every forty five days is kind of the pickup there. So for example, take a site like Stonewood Trail. Building inspectors over there periodically checking out just building permit stuff. These, these things that are all compliant with erosion control, it gives the site super a verbal. Next time Paul's on site, it's been taken care of. There's no paperwork to go along with that. So it's more of a paperwork exercise than anything, in my opinion. But I do want to point out that Paul and I have already discussed this a little bit. I replied to D N R to let them know what the plan for getting back into compliance is, which starts with Paul and I having a meeting to review the procedures together, review the responsibilities. The, the building inspector will be responsible for the actual inspections. He's trained and keeps up a certification as a certified erosion control inspector. Strand will help with documentation and coordination with the D N R. Part of the trick with this is, this is kind of new unknown effort and because of the periodic prescribed forty five days intervals, it's not necessarily part of any one building permit fee. Strand reviewed, okay, like let's take last year as a sample year. How much would it cost for us if we had a certified inspector to come do these regularly? Just with the level of effort involved, et cetera, and it strands rates, it would be over a thousand dollars a month. It's kind of our approximation. I think Paul can, Paul and I discussed, and not only does he have the certification, but I think he can do that much more efficiently. But the village board will have to work out something with Paul to come up with a schedule and maybe a billing procedure or something like that, since this is outside of normal permit duties. Part of the plan was we were notified in June that there was this noncompliance. And since these inspections are supposed to be happening every forty five days, we told the D N R that the first round of prescribed inspections will be documented here by the end of July will take place and happen yet this month. So part of this is, there's only really two active sites right now that qualify for these, that Stonewood Trail and the A and R pipeline. So it shouldn't be a problem to do those, but I just bring that up because it's going to be something that the village board will have to kind of work out with Paul as far as billing and funding for that. Or sites that are in the TIP, falls under administrative expenses, but per a site like the A and R pipeline. Not sure what will be used to cover that.
So did they, did they actually pull building permits in the village of Lanin for that pipeline?
I believe they did.
The only, the only portion that they hit in the village of Lanin is just a crossing on Custer Lane. So it's just a very small, yeah, it was a right away permit just for Custer Lane. About the only place in the village that they relate. How's the rest of that is in the Humming Falls?
So that would be the only area that we would be required to inspect?
I believe so, yep.
Is it over eight or about?
That's a good question. I have to verify what percentage of that is in plan.
So is that, is that something that you could do? Or do we need to have Paul do that as well?
So right now, no. So right now, no one at Strand is certified, so I think.
No, I need to determine the area. Okay.
So this is just more creating paperwork for all. Yeah, cause I know. Working with Strand and with Paul. You guys keep look pretty. Pretty close what I'm rolling from the roll. Um so we just have to come up with. Who's doing? A for.
Right. And and to get more into. The details a little bit, take a project like Stonewood Trail. When they're doing the underground work, um like the water and sewer. Strand is on site. And our people review erosion control when they're on site. In practice, it works, we tell them if there's anything that needs to be corrected. They handle it. There's a little bit of a gap until they start. Working on Paul's. Stuff, right, uh foundations and going vertical. Paul's on site frequently. Obviously, and he's kind of reviewing to make sure that it works. So this is yes, just making sure that every site, every active site. Gets the correct paperwork to build out the minimum of every forty-five days.
But what I'm hearing, the the important piece that I'm hearing is that. I I probably need to have a conversation with Paul then and discuss. How this is gonna work from a mechanics and a billing standpoint, prior to our next meeting where we could actually. Take any kind of action.
Yeah, correct, correct, I talked to Paul, he's going to. Um be here this week, off next week, and back the following week. Um so I think he's aiming for the week of the twenty-eighth to. Actually do the inspections. But he said he would do it in conjunction with the Stonewood Trail visit or something like that, so. There's probably not a ton of effort involved in actually doing the inspection, it's more of just going through the paperwork.
Okay, do we, do we have erosion control permits as a separate permit here in Lannan? Or is it covered under the general building permit?
They usually pull us on erosion control when they start to. Move dirt for like the infrastructure and stuff. So they do do a separate erosion.
And does, and is that permit fee not high enough to cover the cost of the building inspector and and Strand's time?
Probably not, I don't even know what that month is, I don't remember.
So for.
Usually like a couple hundred dollars.
For example, if it was. Total of for one site every forty-five days, if it was two hours of Paul's time. And I'm just guessing, Paul, I talked to him, he was not able to be here tonight, so please just know this is my hypothetical, not his. But let's say it was on A and R Pipeline. It was a hour to walk that site, an hour to do the paperwork. He's gotta do that every forty-five days. Um so. I don't know what is hourly rate is, but that can. Get to exceed the permit, the regular permit fee, probably.
Is there a time limit, how long that permit can be over both them?
Yeah, that's a great question, I I think there is, um I don't know how long. I know from DNR, so they have to get a permit from DNR. And separately, they get a permit from the village. The DNR permit. I believe is good for three years and can be extended for another two. Generally. Plus or minus a year, I'm not sure about the villages.
So and. How long are we gonna have this forty-five day reporting requirement, is this into perpetuity, or is this?
Perpetuity.
And I also noticed that in addition to the every forty-five day cadence. That if there's a rainfall in excess of a half an inch, and and their estimate inspection within twenty-four hours.
Okay, so that's a great point. But to clarify. The contractor is required to do certain intervals of inspections also. And the contractor is required to do after a certain size storm. And they're supposed, those are supposed to be more frequent, and then this is just like the belt and suspenders mindset of the DNR. Is that separately, since they don't have inspectors on their staff? That they're expecting the village to then. Do these minimum forty-five days, and I guess I don't know offhand specifically if there's also after a big rainstorm for a village inspector. But I know for sure, I had it in my mind that that was just on the contractor.
And then the contractor is is obligated to maintain some type of record of that.
Yep, and that's supposed to be available for the building inspector to review their efforts.
Would it make sense for the village in the permit, and I don't know how this would be done? If it's going to be a long-term project and we have to pay the inspector to go out and inspect. That after a certain period of time, Patrick, would it make sense to add? Inspection fees if it goes over. A certain time period.
Yeah, I was trying to think through that myself, and I don't know how we would do that when we don't know necessarily. I if if theoretically, they can have a permit open for five years, I don't know how you're gonna. Try to estimate that, I mean, they typically will give a projected completion date, but. As we all know, those often extend beyond those dates. So, you know, I. The only two ways I can think of it is you either jack up the the permit fee enough. To try to absorb enough of it. Or you have some sort of provision where you try to maybe tap into their professional services agreement. Uh to recapture. Uh inspection fees, but I don't know if that's legal or not, so.
Could the permit be good for a period of time, and then it would have to be renewed?
I think those period terms, it sounds like they're already set, now I don't know if we can change those.
Yeah, it requires some more looking into, because again, the DNR permit versus the.
Village.
Village permit are different. It's kind of like, you know, you hear Paul talk about state-approved clients for buildings versus a local building permit.
Sure.
Kind of like a similar relationship to the DNR erosion control. Plan approval versus the local permit. That gets issued. But yeah, I I was trying to think through if if Strand were doing these, we would do probably just what you said, do it out of the. Professional services agreement. So.
Jerry, you had a thought?
Well, in my experience, also, although you hear years or five years, uh as soon as you re-vegetate it. And or have the stormwater in place, then that ends, you don't have to, the project's five years long. It's only for erosion control, control the erosion, you don't have to do it.
Sure. Yeah, once the site, there is a process of, you know, once the site is closed, then you're out of the forty-five days.
So what action are we looking for here?
I'm not sure exactly, but I wanted, I I just wanted to inform the board with what was going on with that. Um there's probably some action needed to allow Paul to go ahead and do. The required inspections this month, and then sort out. How they're gonna get done moving forward.
Um and then to. Execute the MS four agreement again, is?
No.
No?
Nothing in that regard.
We do need to update the uh building inspector listed on this, though, I suppose, at some point, right?
So, Patrick, would you want a recommendation to allow you to? Do then work out the necessary. With Paul. Until it comes back so that we are covered.
Yeah, and um and then we'll have to. Account for this in our. Budget meetings that are coming up in. Late September, October. Those will be on us before we know it. Um and we should. Discuss uh whether or not we wanna make any changes to our permit fee schedule. Which I know we just did a bunch of those, but. Given this information, I think it. Warren's looking at it again.
Yeah, I I would, I would agree that we should re-evaluate. Um building permit, especially or specifically an erosion control permit. Um so that way the cost for the permit covers the cost of the inspections. Uh and then you could separate um and put like an expiration date on that permit specifically. There shouldn't be an additional cost from the village because of that, that should be covered in the fees, right?
But if a project goes, ends up going longer. Would you be able to put an inspection fee? Additional inspection fee on that, or is that?
Well, I think Dan's, I think Dan's idea is, you know, if they're gonna go a hundred and eighty days, for example. You know that you're gonna need four inspections, right, so you build in the. You know, estimated cost of each inspection into the permit fee for that hundred and eighty day period, and then if they need to go beyond that. They pull a new permit. So, that's the idea?
Yeah, I think that, I think that approach would work, um. You know, that there's a couple other ways to accomplish the same thing, but I think that would be simplistic way to do it. Another way is you could. You could put it uh an allowance or retainer. As part of pulling that erosion control permit. And then they work off of that, um and then the balance is refunded at the completion.
Yeah, like an escrow account?
So yeah.
Actually recommend, yeah.
Yeah, and so that would just be specific to, you know, what would conform to it, anything that's over an acre. Um that has a soil disturbance.
Yeah, I like that one better. So yes, that's, I'd be looking for something like that.
I made a motion to allow Patrick to work out the details with the building inspector. To bring the village into compliance for the MS four permitting. Paperwork. That cover what you need?
Now, are we limiting it to just the next month to get you over the hump? To get till it comes back in front of the board next month, if I go about what his actual fee schedule will be? Yeah, I think so, okay. And then we'll just put this right on next month's agenda and have Paul here and. Have him come with a proposal based on some feedback that I give him.
So I amend my motion. To allow Patrick for the next thirty days. And then this will come back to the board.
Okay, so we have a motion.
I have a second.
We have a motion and a second, any other discussion? No? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Item twelve, uh discussion and possible action regarding the use of municipal code enforcement. This is a uh. Topic we've discussed a couple of different times before, and uh we're continuing to have some of those discussions about. What their role might or might not be. I know that uh Trustee Willard has um. Done a lot of work to compile and analysis which he shared with everybody here that kind of. Creates a. A summary of activities um that they've been doing over. The course of the last. Oh, eight months or so, I guess, nine months. It sounds like um we have a pathway to at least. Make some efforts to handle this in-house. Uh through committee chairs um or other village staff. Uh at some level that we need to, I think, probably flush that out a little bit more. Um and then I would also like to discuss. Whether or not um it makes sense to use them in a different role. At some of these meetings or planning commission meetings for some other things that could be handled by them at a much lower hourly rate. Then, for example, having Ben here from Strand. Uh I think we could realize some significant cost savings there. Should we choose to do that, I think. Ben might even be able to speak on that a little bit. Jimmy put in a lot of work, you wanna kind of?
Sure. So. I was kind of following up on um. Trustee Baptiste's. Recommendation last month that. Hey, you know, it's not our budget. You know, why are we doing this? So, you know, I just uh to satisfy my own curiosity. I compiled the monthly reports from. Um the company that's. Done this uh work for the past twelve months. And um there were forty-nine non-conformances identified. Um I believe it was thirty-five that closed, some with no action taken, some because uh. Um they identified the wrong property on which the non-conformance was. Um you know, and. And looking through it. It seemed to me like this was a very inefficient and ineffective process. Now, I think. You know. If. We have. The ability to have a more hands-on approach with them. It might be a different result, and I'm not saying they didn't do some good work. You know, it's just that for the cost. It uh, you know, doesn't seem. To warrant. You know. What? Has transpired. And, you know, I like Dan's suggestion that uh. You know, the committee chairs take on some of this burden. You know, and follow up on some of these uh. Uh non-conformances. You know, whether it's. Dead trees, whether it's. Improperly maintained properties, whether it's um. Industrial sites that uh. You know, are kind of uh not well screened. You know, it just uh, it it just. Would make sense for it to be more of a shared responsibility, you know, until we're. The village is flush with money and and can can afford to have somebody do this for us.
Okay, um. Yeah, I think uh. Also, Dan uh Trustee Baptiste had um sent out a sample spreadsheet and. Just so folks know, we had actually spent, um I think, myself, Trace and Hector, Chief. Paul. I think Ben, you were at some of those meetings when we were. Initially trying to. Work out how we could handle code enforcement internally and what the process would look like and how we would track it and all that, so. We do, we actually have like a spreadsheet and and a skeleton of a model kind of built out. To do that already, did that? We were kind of well down that path um. When municipal code enforcement uh presented themselves as an option. Um and we made the decision to to give them a shot rather than having all those other. People involved at their various different hourly rates. So I think um. We can give this another, another whack. And see. Um I think what we need to figure out then is, how do we, how do we? Receive these, take these in, I assume we could continue to do them the same way that we've done them in the past, where. Either they come in through the website, um through the uh contact form. Uh Brenda has forwarded some of those on to me in the past. We also have a complaint form that's available at the at the clerk's office. Um they can get submitted that way. And then do you guys want me to review those and decide? Who's who seems most appropriate to get those, or do we want to establish some guidelines and some ground rules for?
Okay, well, well, I think that first of all, you know, it can be via the complaint form. Or it can be things that we see ourselves that we wanna, you know, take care of.
Sure.
But I think, yeah, you're the right person to distribute the uh. The work as you as you see either. Appropriate or based on, you know, or committee should be responsible.
Yeah, I, the other thing that I like too is, you know, we have. A legislative committee, you know, that kind. Yeah, I, the other thing that I like too is, you know, we have a legislative committee, you know, that kind of. Historically writes the ordinances for the village, right? So there probably should be some type of check and balance that goes back to the legislative chair. To determine what ordinance is being offended. Um, you know, that way there's validity behind it, and it's not just a complaint, just to be a complaint. So if a complaint comes in, whether it comes into the office or it's from somebody on the board that notices something. Um I like the idea of a check and balance with the legislative committee. To determine, you know, what ordinance is being violated, if one is being violated. Um if one's not being violated, then it could be, there could be a response that's issued back to the. The complaint that comes in, you know, we understand that this is unsightly, however. Um it does not appear to conform to any by to any ordinance. Um you know, something to that effect as a as a proper response. Uh and then whether it's Patrick or whoever that delegates, you know, how. Who from the step from the board would address it? You know, it I that doesn't matter to me as much, but I think there should be some involvement there too to identify. What ordinance is in violation, and that way it can be cited back with the letter to the property owner of. Of your property has X, Y, and Z, this is the ordinance that states what you should be doing. Um of I should maybe a photograph if we go by and look at it. Um and then that could be mailed out.
Um Chief, in the past, when you've done those, this that's. Kind of basically what you would do, right? You would go and document the current situation uh from a public right away and.
Yes.
Sure.
And then you would you would look up the ordinance filing or the particular ordinance and notice them?
Yes.
You got all the ordinances in a binder, right?
How many complaints do we get? That people come in and fill out those complaint forms?
It varies.
We do get some.
We do get some. Or we get an email or a call.
If we get a call. Do you fill out the form?
No, usually just, well, I have an email. I mean, lately it's been. Up all on, you know, or up holes and good hope, I hope somebody like.
Who cut at this property?
Yeah.
Junk car sitting there for three years at this property. Well, I mean, that works fine for me, I I have no problem, you know. Trying to do it this way and and to the point that was just made, I think in general. The number of complaints aren't excessive in nature. I think the part of the. Efforts behind using municipal code enforcement was to have a. An outside unbiased uh source. Actively seeking violations to kind of raise the level of the. Uh of the village from an aesthetic standpoint. So I I think, and then the other question or one of the big things that came. Uh that we saw as a benefit to using them is then you remove all question of any selective enforcement, right? We're all residents, we all live here, I presume we all have neighbors and friends here. You know, you you kind of distance yourself from the idea of. Well, you just don't like me, so you're picking on me, or this guy doesn't like me, so you know, we used to play, you know. Hopefully we don't get into that and that doesn't happen, but just. Be alert that that might be an issue. Um I don't know how active we all want to be in terms of seeking out these. Violations, and I assume that we'll all have varying levels of involvement in that regard, but. But I think uh we can give it a shot. Give it a shot, we'll funnel everything through me uh initially. I think based on what I'm hearing, I think Dan's recommendation is a good one, I'll probably bounce them over to Jim to look at. Um and then we'll decide a course of action from there. Ben, yes, Ben?
I have some additional comments, I know.
Please.
All right. I don't know how to really say it delicately, so, you know, being a resident here, I'm just gonna. Lay it on the table. Uh my personal billing rate is approaching two hundred dollars an hour. I think what Strand bills the village overall is very reasonable because we are always. Filtering in younger staff that we can assign to appropriate tasks for them, so. I haven't checked lately, but we've always been in the. One forty-ish range, but when it comes to stuff like what ends up on the plan commission. At Strand. It almost take more effort to hand that off to a junior person, get them up to speed on the ordinances, the properties, the procedures, et cetera. I've gotten pretty efficient at it, so. Um but the reality is, I've observed over the years kind of the gap in how. Let's take a traditional plan of operation. Take something like um. Our dealership over here, luxury auto, I think it might be. That for the longest, you know, they came in here and they got conditional approval on plan of operation, this is like years ago. But they were supposed to put some big boulders up to close off their second entrance. And so we approve it, that plant or the plant commission approves it at that level, I put my comments, my letters together, whatever. I'm not the enforcement wing of the zoning administrator duties. Um Paul's not here to see what actually happens, and so from there, it just kind of. Almost like an honor system. For an applicant to follow through on what uh plan commission told them. And then a few months to a year go by and nothing happens, and the plan commission gets very frustrated because. Nothing's happened, it's not something that arises to the level that's. Chief or the village attorney or I need to get involved, but yet. Who can kind of make that happen? So one potential opportunity here is Patrick and I did talk to M C E. And they do also do. Like this kind of review, application review tasks that are associated with. The zoning administrator duties that are identified in the ordinance. So one thought is, you know, at their fifty dollar an hour billing rate. You know, if I have. Two hours wrapped into one plan commission where, you know, I'm sitting here. For an hour plus I'm reviewing, I'm talking to the applicant for an hour of prep work. Uh, you know, they could knock out eight hours of effort. Did they do that in two hours? I don't know, maybe, but then there's either A, just some cost savings. Or B, at zero cost savings, they could also follow through on some of these conditions. And they kind of have the mechanisms in place to do that, so. Um, another thing, just being real, my. Oldest is going into high school and the high school and activity schedules are crazy, so. I would not cry about getting replaced on a. At monthly plan commission meetings. Um in reality, um. There are still going to be some applications that require some input from village engineer. So I don't think our involvement goes from a hundred percent down to zero, but it might go from a hundred percent down to twenty-five percent. And I would say that's much more in line with other communities where Strand is village engineer, but they have, say, an administrator. Normally, it's the village administrator that would be. Working with the applicants, following through on conditions, things like that, and that's just part of the salaried staff position. Um and then they only call in me or Strand. When it's needed, when there's a more engineering geared thing or a more controversial thing that they. Want us to kind of take the lead on, et cetera, so. That's one though. Now I have a separate opinion as resident on how the first iteration with M C E went. I think it would be. There's probably more value there uh to the taxpayer to do it on a complaint base. Which is kind of what you're all are contemplating doing right now anyways. Oh, I'm striding around looking for stuff, but you're talking about how to handle complaints. Having them, if M C E. Followed through on plan commission conditions. And then handled complaints. They might be able to do both for the price that Strand right now is just doing. Uh plan commission duties, so I I did go back and just. Quickly tallied the last three whole years. And it's all hourly and it varies depending on the number and types of applications. But just like out of the general fund, so to speak, or uh non-tid items. In twenty-four, um. Strand billed about thirty-nine hundred for plan commission items, it's just a lot lower, I had to double check that. Twenty-three, it was about eighty-four hundred dollars in total. In twenty-two, it was fifteen thousand seven hundred. So it all just varies on the workflow, really, but. I know I'm just. Throw a lot at you, happy to. Field any questions or questions on that also.
I guess I would ask the question of if the plan commission is offering approvals that have conditions on it. Why is the plan commissioner, maybe is is a plan commissioner offering a a conditional approval? It sounds like we're all, the plan commissioner is offering an approval that should be conditional, but it's not conditional. Could could the plan commission? Provide conditional approvals for operators to operate their business. Put a ninety day or hundred and eighty day or whatever stipulation on it. And then have the applicant come back with photo documents or something to verify that they've met said conditions. Well, why does the village have to pay for that?
Yeah, I think that's a good suggestion, the trick is really nuanced in. Who is verifying that condition was met? Is it, they are leaving the plan commission with clear direction on what they're doing. And the timeframe, and they are coming back and presenting that to the plan commission? Or is there like a designated? Village staff or representative of the plan commission that's then verifying that?
Yeah, I think a- and we have a few of those types of items that. Are going to be discussed at the plan and mission meeting. A couple nights. Because historically, that is part of the gaps in our. In our government here in land and that doesn't have an administrator to track those things and to follow up on those things, it's like. There's there's so many divided responsibilities that there's sometimes the glue is missing that holds it all together. So, um but there are a couple of items that Mr. Grimm has brought up um. That we're gonna discuss. And see how we can go about getting those cleaned up. Cause you're right, typically that's that is what happens, we're we're issuing those conditionally. Okay, but you know, you need to have this done by this time and blah, 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 and then it's like everybody goes on their merry way and. Two years later, somebody's like, hey, what happened to that fence at Land and Stone or? The gate at H M Brandt, or you know, whatever it is. So.
Yeah, I would say even in. If if someone leaves with clear direction and they're given ninety days and they have to come back, it's what if they just don't? Then there's even a gap here, which gets more. Close to this realm you're talking about of how to handle complaints, it's like, all right, well. Ninety day, who's who's tracking the ninety days? And then what if they don't show up? Who's communicating with them? Who's? Turning it over for follow-up and enforcement? Is it one of you, is it the attorney, the inspector, chief? It just gets into a. Really. Weird situation that way.
Well, the reality of our situation is that unlike trustee Willard, I really do actually like the code enforcement um that we used. I thought that they were much more efficient than you thought they were because you see, you know, forty-two and thirty-nine closed. And that doesn't seem like a lot, but the truth is there were zero before, and the biggest complaint that I get from constituents is. I don't like the way our village looks junky, and so it was not only in response to a cry from the constituency. That they wanted more code enforcement, but it was also, as Ben pointed out, um I as a person who sits on the. Plan and commission absolutely agree that quite often we try to do what's best for the businesses that are coming to us, and we will approve conditionally a plan of operation. And then fail to follow up on it because we don't have a full-time administrator, we, you know, everybody moves on and it's it's just neglectful. It is something that I thought that that company was very good at filling those gaps and reminding us and saying, hey, by the way. That fence isn't built yet, um but the reality of our budget is that we can't afford them. So I guess we are going to have to come up with um maybe a calendar, maybe we start using our computers a little bit more, and we say. That at the June meeting, we said that somebody had to respond to us in ninety days, and then that task goes on the calendar. And, you know, I don't know, we need like one central source, because I also feel a lot of times things end up going to Patrick. And then I go, what happened with that? Oh, I've dealt with it, but you know, because we are not communicating as a staff. We are volunteering as trustees, it's a different mindset. You know, sometimes Patrick will say, Colleen, I'm assigning this to you, you need to do this, but quite often, we just assume things are being handled. Because we do have some staff, which clearly it's not their job to expand into code enforcement. But they end up doing it because they're here, right? I mean, you know. So maybe what we have to do and maybe something that I'll think about is how can we use. The tools that are available to us um through Google tasks, or I mean, is there something we can set up? So that we are making reminders to ourselves and that there's an accountability there that. Isn't like a a slap on the hand, you're supposed to do this, but more like, hey, just automatically. Sometimes what I'll do is I will put a reminder that on September's budget meeting, we need to talk about um fees. Do you know what I mean? Like, like, but do something like that so that we have some accountability, because honestly, I'll. I'll go on to my next thing and that promise I made will get forgotten if there's not an accountability of some type there.
Squirrel.
Yeah, right, yeah, well, I have a job, we all have jobs, you know, we we go back into, uh we take one hat off, we put another one on. And sometimes we don't put our trustee hat back on until it becomes, yeah, right, exactly.
Brenda, in um, so I'm not a huge fan of our email. The Microsoft thing, but. So I haven't dug in real deep, but there is a calendar in there and and. It's tied to all of our mail accounts, which we all have. Right? Now, I I assume then that means you as the village clerk have one as well. Could we not simply, um you know, the next day after some of those meetings? Put in a a calendar reminder and and. You could add, you could like tag us all all of the appropriate people, just. So there's that. Reminder, or at least maybe so. May and and maybe it's just that it gets brought up on an agenda again and we notify them, hey. You have not met the conditions of your condition. You have not met the conditions of your conditional use or your cert, you know. Uh, plan of operations, whatever it might be, you know. You're on the agenda for next month's meeting, please be there. Or your attendance is required or whatever. Now, I don't know what, if anything, we can do to really compel them to actually show up. Um, other than, other than simply pull their plan of operation, I suppose that's the. That's the whole card, right?
One recommendation, I was thinking of potentially just have a rotating agenda item on the plan commission, even if there is no review of that month. Just so you've got something every month that says, hey, do we have any to review this month, just so if it's in writing. You know, at least triggers off to you and be like, okay, Brenda, hey, do we have any, do we have, that we have to remind him for? This time, just so it doesn't get taken off the calendar. Everyone's always thinking about.
Yeah, my concern with that would be is that we would get into the habit of just not having anything and then we'd be right back where we are now. You know, um, but but I think it's a good practice to have it there, so at least it's agendized. So that even if it's the last minute and we think of it the day before the meeting, we can still discuss it. Right?
Um, the other thing I'll look into is Civic Plus, which is the company that we use for our communications. They do have software packages that help small municipalities without um, without. Uh administrators do things like code enforcement, maybe I'll talk to them too and see if it's something that. That could help us, um, you know, you're talking about using Microsoft three sixty five, which. You know, I'm sure there's tasks in there and you know, all that. But we could also maybe look into other technologies that it might be as simple as an app. You know what I mean? Like literally, like to. To help track that.
Well, and there was a citizen at a meeting here that had sent me a link to. Some software and it might be useful too. So if there's anybody that wants to dig into that, we can look at that as well. So I guess, um, I don't know if we need, um. If we want to take any action on this tonight, at least it's got. Everybody thinking about this as we again start to approach budget season here. Um, I think some of the data that Ben provided um can be useful for us, um. But I would, I would welcome any individual discussions on ideas. You know, I've, I've had some conversations with Dan, Jim, anybody else wants to? Pipe in, I I would just remind everybody not to send out group emails to. Everybody on the board. We don't want a walking quorum situation, so please be mindful of that. Uh, let's not try to loop too many people in on these communications. But if anybody has an action they want to put forth, um, certainly take it.
I'll take a stab at it. So I'll make a motion that we suspend any more work with M C E for the time being. And that we revisit this discussion uh until August. And when we come up with a more solid plan.
I'll second.
Good motion, a second, do we have any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, item number thirteen, uh, discussion of possible action regarding referral from the plant commission. For the Mike Marker and Sons Plan of Operation. Here's it. An example of uh one of these situations right here. Uh, Ben, do you want to go through this? So you prepared to go through this?
I can just briefly um tee it up and that is to say. This originated at the March Plan Commission Meeting. And the lone wolf auto spa plan of operation. Uh, last month's plan commission meeting, well, in March. Reportedly, I wasn't at that meeting, but uh reportedly. Um, that. Lone Wolf Auto Spa Plan of Operation was not approved outright, they had like sixty days to. Get parking lot addressed, screen the dumpster, there might have been some outdoor storage issues there also. Uh, Lone Wolf Auto Spa just leases space from Marker and Sons. So planning commission last month, um. Went ahead and approved the Lone Wolf Auto Spa Plan of Operation. And uh, I believe decided to refer. Marker and Sons Plan of Operation for enforcement to the village board. Uh, and I believe the specific action was to do their driveways in a state of disrepair. To do something about that, uh, to screen the dumpster and any outside storage.
Right, and Marker and Sons did not have a plan of application on a a a plan of operation on file with the village, even though they have. Operated there for a number of years, is that correct, Ben?
Uh, no, I think Brenda was able to find.
They do have, oh, they did have one, yeah, they did have one.
Yeah, and this is the copy of the existing one, right? So I think, um, and I'll just fill in a few more details, so some of the. The 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 main issue with um some of the Lone Wolf Auto Spa. Approval came down to um. A similar situation that we have over at A F W, where you have multiple layers really of plan of operations that need to be. In alignment with one another. So you have the property owner who should have a plan of operation, which should indicate. That there's going to be, you know, X number of lessies or these specific lessies. And any particular terms that might be associated with that lease. And then each individual tenant. Uh, that's operating there is required to have their own subsequent plan of operation, which would. Um, be subordinate to. The property owners. Um, so that's kind of the situation we're trying to clean up at A F W. We had a similar situation here where this poor guy was just trying to start his business and and get going. And. His feet were being held to the fire so that we could try to clean up some of the other plan of operations, which we felt were. Either incomplete or out of compliance.
I'll just. Add another thing I don't do when I'm reviewing plans of operation, whatever they are. I don't go visit the site ahead of time. I just review the information that they've submitted in their application versus the ordinances and put my comments together. Usually at least one plan commissioner is pretty good about going and visiting the site, so. This is an example of one of the reasons I didn't even go to the March meeting is because this was. The only item, it was pretty glam, straightforward, whatever, I didn't know that there were issues at the property. That's where, in that case, the planning commissioner was on top of it, but it just. Flew off the bat in a direction I was not expecting, yeah.
So what we, what we did is we asked the um. The applicant. Um, to reach out to. The person that he was subletting from, who was also a tenant of the owner. Uh, to try to compel them to. Um, update plans of operation or get into compliance. Eventually, we did not want to continue to punish this person. Um, he provided some additional information in terms of the specific. Measurements of the space, et cetera. Um. And we ultimately, at the planning commission. Chose to try to compel the other upper layers to uh comply or update as needed. That seemed about right to you, Jerry, if you recall?
Yeah.
So I'm not sure, really, to the point of those, I'm not really sure what, what we're. Compelled to do here with this particular plan of operation, or what the action is.
So to my knowledge, no one has followed up with. Michael F. Marker to let him know this is going the way of enforcement, um, but.
Right, and the enforcement specifically that we're asking for is the repair of the dra- of the uh parking area. And the screening of the dumpsters, I believe, or where the.
And and out, the third thing was any outside storage.
Yeah, right.
So I, I talked to Mr. Marker before that last planning commission meeting and he said, oh, what am I? Construction guy, you know, he's beat up the parking lot because of all his dumpsters around there, uh. Okay, well, just gonna follow up with them and say, all right, the plant mission said fix it. What's the condition, what's the timeframe? Et cetera.
So I guess that's probably. Where this one falls in is, what does the bill, village board want to do as far as enforcement goes for this?
Well, okay, so that property was identified for two non-forances by M C E. And they were both closed. Um, supposedly, um, they were comply, they were compliant on the screening of the dumpster. And they were compliant on cleaning up and removing discarded items, in other words, setting the debris in the area. Um, now, I took a drive by the other day and. You know, rather unsightly, but, um, you know, there've been a long uh edge with drive. You know, there's a mix of uh industrial type businesses that are really aesthetically pleasing, they've done a nice job. Of, you know, beautifying their property. In some cases, you know, not so nice. So I classify this one as probably not so nice. And, you know, but in order to. Get them in more compliance, you know, their owner would have to, you know, do some resurfacing. And have to invest some money into his property.
And I happen to know that, um, the owner of the property, um, running the B Twin Repair Shop. Um, he, um, during COVID, um, actually kind of closed the, the business. For time or or stopped working full time at it and took a fruktori job in order to get him through COVID. And, uh, so I'm not sure if he's, if his plan of operation is still in effect or not, I don't know if he's still actively repairing motorcycles there or not. And I would.
Actually works, had a shot in the falls. Right down the street from your place.
Wedland? Yeah, right across the street there, Tom, of course, from Tom.
He is. Partner man and he's been there for. Three, four, or five years. I don't know how like his bike shop actually does. This one, I go past there, I don't normally see anybody. But the outside salt storage was moved.
Yeah, they got rid of that.
He did clean up that from three years ago. Yeah, he had salt under Terry, he had calcium chloride. In a driveway.
Well, he had the illegal hoop structure.
Yeah.
And he added amineesment, put it the wrong place.
Yeah, the we energy. Then it was too close to the building.
And he's not a decent person with people.
So he's the landlord of the property.
He's the owner.
And if, and if we revoke his operator license, what does that do to all the tenants in that space?
That's Tracy.
It was closed down, fortunately, they can't run their business since there is no plan of operation.
And in reading through this plan of operation. I don't, he has it listed where it's. Tenant one, tenant two, but I go, I did not see anything in there. Listed that he was renting units out, is that? Supposed to be in his plan of operation.
And this plan of operation is from twenty fourteen, so probably at the time, he didn't have any intention of.
Well, it says, and then. And it's one in the body shop, I don't know if body shop's even fourteen, right? But in here. In his plan of operation, how is it supposed to be listed? That he is renting. Part of the building off the different businesses, is that supposed to be in here?
So yes, it is, and it's supposed to be delineated on the site plan and it should be done to scale. Have measurements and all of that included it. And I would say that, at least my expectation would be that he doesn't necessarily have to maybe. Identify a specific tenant for each space, but all of the leasable spaces should be identified in some manner. And addressed in, in this master plan, if you will. Of operation and that each sub subordinate plan of operation falls under that. So that everything's in alignment, right, so that there's a clear chain of command, if you will. Um. And that, I, you know, I think what Trace is saying is, is. That's, that's the hook, that's what compels them to comply if. If they face the threat of their tenants not being able to continue to operate their business. Which is not going to be good for them, or the tenants.
Well.
Um. I think the tough situation that Landon has found itself in over the last few years, or at least my perception. Is that we have historically had a kind of laissez faire approach to this whole thing. Um, and there really hasn't been any consequences, and so when you come along and you start trying to. Um, put consequences on things like this, it's, it seems distasteful. It seems vindictive, it seems like you're not business friendly or you don't want them here. Um. That's the hard thing to swallow, right? But the fact of the matter is, I think we're trying to improve the village. Uh, we're trying to clean up some of this stuff and. I, I don't know how to approach it other than to just say, look, I'm sorry, it's too bad, I mean, it's. This is the direction we're going in as a village and we could try to be accommodating, maybe. And we can grant some time for people to get into compliance, but I, I think the expectation should be that they should at least acknowledge. Um. The fact that they are out of compliance and they should demonstrate some effort to get into compliance or at least a plan to do so. And then it's up to the board to grant any leniency or maybe an extension of some time. But do something, right? Um. That's my feeling, yes.
If it is down to just maintenance of the parking area, there's an ordinance that addresses this, I'll read you a paragraph of it.
Please, yeah.
Um, so section fifty eight thirty one is maintenance and placement of driveways and parking areas. Sub D, sub three, um, covers kind of the condition of. Existing paved areas and says if it does not reply with any of several things. Um. Mainly that as a detrimental effect on adjoining or neighboring neighboring properties. That by reason of its condition or appearance, it is either detrimental to the aesthetic values of the village or aesthetically incompatible with enjoying uses. Um, when an area is judged by the plan commission being not complying with the intent of the section. The plant commissioner clerk shall notify the property owner of the necessary directive measures. Property owner shall be required to submit a plan to the commission within ninety days of notification of non-compliance. Within twenty four months after notification, the property owner shall. Within twenty-four months after notification, the property owner shall have taken corrective pressures.
Oh, see.
Now that's specific to paving. So the screening. Of outside storage and dumpsters that's taken care of, then. I think the village has precedent for kind of. Two years to fix your driveway.
So I think I think. You know, therein lies the key, so we can say, well, it's an industrial area, but then you have a company right across the street, Kenright Copac, who. Keeps an impeccably maintained property, right? And what if they wanna bring in a big client because they're working on a new deal and they're, you know, got that across the street? You know? That's. Part of the responsibility of owning property.
It brings up another thought in my mind, which is as I follow the natural conclusion of this through, I think to myself, well, I would like to reach out to this person. As a village trustee, and I would like to say, hey, we have some issues. Here are the issues we have. We would like to get you on record with all of your bookkeeping, all of your plan of operation in the way in which we would like it to flow naturally. To the benefit of your business and your tenants, and I would like the following things rectified. That's all great, except I'm not an expert in that. That's why we pay you a lot of money, because I could walk into that place. And I could say, well, I know that your pavement needs to be redone and your garbage needs to be screened and you can't have stuff laying all over. But I don't know the codes on exterior lighting or that the hoop is in the right way, or I'm not an expert in it. Which is some of the thing that I liked about using code enforcement, because they went there and they went, these are clearly violations. We know what they are. We do this for a living. I don't do that. I would much rather spend my time on the village board writing a review that goes on the website about the business of the month in Landon. And I would like to do promotion and I would like to do all the fun things that get me reelected. I don't wanna be the one out there. No, I'm serious, though. I mean, my time would be better spent, you know, doing a fundraiser, helping the police, planting some flowers. Promoting a business than going and telling someone that we're gonna shut you down if you don't do the following things, because I'm not even an expert in it. I may not even ask for the right things, which is another reason why I'm over the point of the code enforcement people who do that for a living or using Ben at, you know. At his rate, because I I wouldn't be afraid that I would volunteer to do something that would would get us in more trouble or, you know. That just makes true sense with on that, but I would, if you wanna assign this to me, I'll talk to this guy and say, listen, we gotta clean up some stuff. But but it brings up the thought process that I just expressed, which is I'm not an expert at that.
Right, which is why I suggested, you know, using the legislative chair. Who prepares and writes the ordinances to be involved in that process. Because then we can have a discussion as a board of. You know, hey, there's a property where there's some issues. I don't know if this is an ordinance issue, I don't know all the details of it. Let's work together on it, let's refer to one of the other chairs on here, say, you know. Do, is there an ordinance on potholes in a parking lot? Is there an ordinance on hoops and placement of it? And then, you know, working together with each other. You know, the. The legislative committee should know what the what the laws are for our community, right? So I I think that cooperation, I think, is essential for building this together. And then somebody, you know, on this committee, on this board, will then send the notice out and. Our job here isn't to get reelected, our job here is to represent our community and do what's best for our taxpayers. So and.
Which which sometimes is using an expert.
Right, and and I'm all for using the ex experts, but I'm also in favor of being stewards with the money that we have. And not spending money we don't have.
But our legislative team isn't professionals in knowing all the ordinance laws either. And I agree with Colleen in the sense that. Yeah, we don't have the budget for it. I fully agree with you to have the municipal code enforcement team. But they're not, our legislative team. Is not a full or legal. Like trace or. For the municipal. I mean, which is their job inside and out.
Right, but you also don't need an attorney to send notification other. To the property owner either.
Unless you send the wrong something wrong, then it comes back at you, then it's a problem. But I I don't know if that's even a reality or a possibility, but.
But it also becomes part of the legal team. If we give them sixty days to comply, we don't, and they don't, we don't. And then we legally have to go after them.
Yeah, I I would, I would argue that wouldn't be any different with municipal code enforcement either. At some point, they're going to. Issue a citation. If it gets to the point of going to circuit court or municipal court, then it's it's going to the attorney anyway, but.
M C E only issued two citations. You know, I know, I know, I mean, code enforcement is not a revenue maker.
Right.
But, you know, it can be.
And I'm all for beautifying our community, it definitely needs it, there's no question, but. And we were real clear with them that issuing citations was not our goal, was compliance, you know. Ultimately, would much rather have people comply with ordinances than uh. Well, what do you wanna do with this then? I would volunteer my time and limited talents if you trust me to do it, but I'll be good to you, Patrick.
I, if you have a, if you, if you know this person and you feel that you can. Tell them to. Meet some of these things, I think um. I think you should probably have a a conversation with Mr. Willard about what specifically. Have outlined what those requirements we're looking for are. So that you can be real clear in your communication of them, and I would just suggest that you. Come prepared with an official notice from the village of those items. So that it's on record and it's dated and all that stuff. So thank you.
Gotcha.
And it forced me with you.
And would it be helpful, Colleen, to help? Like Ben, what of what exactly the code is?
Right, right, and I took notes on that, Ben, thanks for the paving. And then I I drove up there after the last planning commission meeting too and uh. And I saw that the dumpster was fenced, the fence happened to be left open, but you you know, like. I'll go back up there before I do anything again and and put my eyes on it. And and I would just like to have a conversation with this person.
Okay, I I would just say, just. Thinking down the line of everything, if if you do have a conversation with this person and it's not fixed, then. Like you said, if we need some sort of written document or letter that that's Ben giving the code and stuff, because due process says you have to tell them the violation that they have. So you've got it, you've got to tell them what ordinance they are violating uh from the standpoint, because if you're overdoing or prosecuting of them. You have to have that paper trail there, so. So if you start with a conversation, that's fine, but if it doesn't go anywhere, we need some sort of paper trail.
Understood, and I will draft everything that I are to share it up if any wants to that. Trustee, we're we're, if we wanna share.
I would also like to suggest. As we go forward with this, that whenever we do prepare these notices. If we do. Um and when we do, along with photographs and things of that nature, I think all of that stuff. Um should be forwarded on to legal counsel just to have. A record of it and. Maybe a quick scan through to make sure that we have. Oh, you wanna know? Just to make sure that we've dotted our i's across our t's and. I I don't know if there's. Are there any potential pitfalls that we need to be thinking about as we? As we uh deputize all these new sheriffs?
I'm sure that makes him there.
The only thing I would say is I do think that if. Verbally, if everyone's going to do it, that's fine, but if people are going to be sending off different letters at different times, I think. One universal form of something that. Every trustee can send out and you can put a little bit of personalization if they want to. I just don't want one person to get a letter. And it's a lot more informal and then you've got some sort of due process violation because one trustee is a lot more flawed with how they say things. As opposed to someone else who's coming off like a dictator or something like that. I just think that. If, you know, the trustees aren't going to do that, I think at least for Ben and my sanity, uh. You know, for on the enforcement side of whoever it is, that there's gotta be a unified letter or something like that that would go out um so that. You know, you've got legal counsel and, you know, that Pauls or, you know, you know, Chiefs can blessing that says, hey. Use this document or whatever, I feel comfortable with you doing that as long, you know, we're with, as long as we're in the parameters, that's only conservative.
Patrick, this almost sounds like a committee. Doesn't it seem like a committee to you, like a code enforcement committee? It 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 almost seems to me like. Like if if you're just gonna start assigning, you know, that's Don's neighbor, he knows him, Don's gonna go after that guy over that thing. And Tina's gonna go after this person because it's on her side of town. I feel like there should be some cohesiveness, just exactly to to Trace's point there that. And we have form letters and we have a place on the server that we file all of this as it happens, even if we're dividing the work. There should be some cohesiveness to it, or. Like when you made the employee handbook, you were in charge of making the 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 employee handbook. I I feel like there should be somebody who's in charge of making the form letters or stealing them from the code enforcement company that just issued a bunch of them.
I also, I also wanna caution that. What I just read. From section fifty eight thirty one. The notice shall come from plan commission or clerk, ninety days, they have to come back with a plan, twenty-four months to comply. That's as clean as it gets, and that's the exception. That's this other stuff about, hey, your plan of operation is out of date. It doesn't identify your less fees, whatever. There's no script for. Here's where the normal. With the official notice should come from, here's how many days you have to come back, whatever, that's kind of.
I'm not a lawyer either.
Tricky.
To Patrick's point earlier, that's what we tried to do a couple of years ago. I literally created a checklist. If complaint comes in, do step two. If this comes in step three, then it goes to plan commission, they vote on it. If not, then it goes to village boards. So I mean, that was something that, you know, was at least a handout to give to a trustee to be like, hey, this is what we need to follow. This is where the complaints need to go, so we don't. Have half the complaints going to Brenda, half the complaints are going to Ben or whatever the case may be.
Do we still have that?
Yeah, it's saved somewhere, you know. Yeah, I still have all those notes, I have the this, well, the email chains, the spreadsheet. Um from when we were doing that. But then again, those, that process involved. The building inspector at eighty dollars an hour, Trey said. I wanna know. Ben at two hundred an hour. Uh the chief at the cost of his hourly wage plus. The opportunity cost of him not being on the street controlling, so we get yelled at more about it, the police don't do anything here.
And I was against the code enforcement at the first, you remember that? I was like, I don't need anyone walking around our community telling us what we can and can't do. You know, I was kind of like libertarian about it, really not wanting to bring it in. And then that argument right there. Around us all around and said, boy, this is really a good solution for the situation that we find ourselves in, being able to respond to the complaints from the community. And do the code enforcement while still having accountability from an expert. That is charging a lot less than our other experts, which are great experts, nothing personal, but you know, it it was a solution. So, but is if the budget doesn't handle it, you know. You either have poor code enforcement, no code enforcement, or code enforcement at a cost.
Yeah, I I think. My personal feeling is is that it. There's value there to me and it makes more fiscal sense to use them. But if you, if you. Put a gun to my head right now and say, show me on paper the numbers, I can't do it. I can't do it, because we haven't gone through all of that enough. And pulled together the data like Ben did for us on just planning commission meeting type stuff. Um it it it's a. I think it was more of an instinctual thing. Um and and that's probably gonna be what we're gonna have to do with the budget. At budget time, and if we can. Defund certain areas or. Acknowledge that we're gonna have cost savings in certain areas, and that's how we're going to fund additional activities like this. Well, I think that's, that's what people want, right? So I I think we have some opportunities coming up very soon. I think we're kind of. In a little bit of a limbo right now where we've got a couple of months before budget time, I think. I just don't know if it's worth investing a bunch of our. Time into trying to circle back on that whole process again. Maybe we'll wait until we see how the budget shakes out and if we can find a way to do it in the budget. And that's another option as well.
Patrick, can I just say that if anybody's writing letters or whatnot, they should come through my office just so we can put them on letterhead and.
Absolutely.
So we don't have a bunch of people just.
Yeah.
Out there.
No, ab- absolutely, and you can be the gatekeeper and kind of uh. Be a second set of eyes on it for us and say, are you crazy? You can't send this to somebody?
Looking back to find. A form. Where you can list the violations. And you have the backup. And you approach. Because I get an earful from a business down the street. I called her and asked her a question. And it's like, if you were here, why didn't you come in and talk? Well, I I can't come in and talk to you, I'm afraid you. And that's. If somebody goes down there and talks to him face to face, hey, can we? Get this handled? This is, we're not here to torment you here. But we would like this taken care of. And see what they have for a response.
Well, I think that's what Colleen is suggesting here in this particular instance, and let's see how this goes.
Right, I could call him and and say we've got some things and he goes, I've got the um the parking lot scheduled for repaving the end of September. I mean, you know.
Thousand dollars on a spread job, I'm getting it done next week.
I'm sure it won't be that easy, but it could be, so um the first thing I'll do is is just say there's an issue and and we're gonna work through it. And I hope that I have your support on this and uh. We'll see how the the honey uh attracts bees. Yeah, right.
And that would follow up with the ordinance on that, but um. I agree, we don't have the money and the budget, but I also do feel very strongly that you would, you'd have a better response. From a third person. A third source coming in than us coming in, who live in the village, who there could be our neighbors, they could be, you know, yes, they'll come and give us our complaint. The complaint complains to us, but I think a third person who's neutral. Is the better source and we need to find a way to.
Well, let's try to prioritize that budget time then. I mean, and until then, we'll be working through these issues individually and I'll do the best I can to um. Come to resolutions on, you know, whatever, whatever individuals we have, but you know, let's work towards um finding out. Um a more reliable, permanent solution at budget time if we can.
I'm sorry, did, did they submit this plan of operation or did you simply find it on file and?
File.
And put it in here, but so you've had no, they have not contacted you at all. And they. And they are the property owner, you know? So then, there's there's also another layer in between this guy and lone wolf autosport. As well then, right, this is sub less, the guy that's sub letting.
His name is George, I believe so, George Doro, that would be tenant one.
Yeah.
Or PPG collision.
No, tenant one. Is the space that.
And then lone wolf is sub lessing the front part of tenant one and the back part by the access door, three hundred square feet, as I recall from.
Yeah, which is only identified by. By a painted line on the floor. So um. A motion to empower Colleen to at least start the backlog. Do we have a motion from someone other than the village attorney himself?
I make a motion to empower Colleen to use her skills. And getting the issues of the outside storage, the four parking lot and dumpster screaming.
For the property at one nine seven eight five West Edge Wind Drive.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second? Any other discussion? Thank you, Colleen, and good luck, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried.
Just a question, Patrick.
Yes, sir.
In a case like this where there are some letters, is the main. Holder of the plan of operation supposed to come back to correct their plan of operation?
I would say, and and I could be totally wrong here, because again, I'm not an engineer either or a lawyer, I just play them on TV. Um unless they. Somehow. One of the tenants either modifies the space from a structural standpoint. Or from an operational standpoint that goes against what's laid out in the master plan of operation. So if the master plan of operation, he simply indicates, oh, eight to five Monday through Friday, and there's. A restaurant in there now that wants to stay open till nine o'clock, well, we have a problem, right, because they can flip.
How do we present that?
Um I think uh that's a good question, I think. Going forward and and granted, there are limited circumstances of this in our village. Um I think what we have to do is be. Very clear in our communications of our expectations with these folks when they fill these out. Or if they need to submit a corrected one, we need to be very clear about, hey, here are the. You know, similar to what we do on the planning commission, when somebody comes in and they. We always seem to have a comment about their hours of operation, which is why I use that example, right? Oh, well, I'm not gonna be in on a Sunday, you know, it says here you're not gonna be open Sundays, well, I'm not, yeah, I'm not gonna be opening on the Sunday. Well, unless this, this, or this, and it's like, okay, then put it on there, right? So, we have to, and our staff has to know how to explain those things to them. To create a good plan of operation. Does that seem fair? Yeah, Ben, you agree?
I'm sorry, I was not paying attention. Filling to something else over here.
Right, sort of going business to business and updating plans of operation like 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 a full-time administrator would do in the gaps between, you know, normal. Tasks, I don't know how we would ever, because that's just the attrition that happens in a small community is, a lot of these guys probably don't even remember that in twenty fourteen, they submitted a plan of operation. Nor do they remember what it said. Well, more than a few years ago, probably six, seven years ago, maybe, they did go through. My whole plan of operation file cabinet and updated if there was something missing, if we didn't have a recent plan of operation at that.
Talked about the aliens?
Mike Graham, Bill Rudolph, and Dave Nadler.
Okay.
Um went through and kind of, you know, got everybody up to date as far as as that. But uh you know, obviously, that was oh, a bit ago, but you know, so. Was it, I, yeah, I remember it, but. Time flies, so I mean, it's it's one of those things, you know, but. You don't know if there's tenants, you don't know if there's sections of buildings, even it's hard to to know what these places are. Or if they're still in business.
I think the horse is dead, we have item fourteen.
I guess.
Um yeah, okay, discussion of possible action regarding the contract for humane animal welfare society, Waukesha County. We can stretch this out thirty minutes.
Um so they neglected to, well, they said they sent the contract, I didn't get it in the mail, um so it. It's from the beginning of the year to the end, um it's, I believe, two hundred, two fifty. Two hundred and six dollars renewal fee. Um I make a motion that we accept the um contract presented from the Humane Animal Welfare Society for the um. Twenty twenty five uh contract in the amount of two hundred and six dollars.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
We're all gonna jump on them.
Any other discussion, all those in favor? Any opposed, motion carries. Item fifteen, discussion possible action on ordinance amendment regulating non-conforming uses structures and lots.
Well, the legislative committee discussed, um our office had prepared some red lines to section seventy eight fifty three of the legal non-conforming uses structures and lots. Um current ordinance, um it was really old and there was uh legislation passed over ten years ago. That had removed the the uh the fifty percent of current assessed value remodeling um and updating. Um the the law used to state that you could only remodel uh non-conforming structure up to fifty percent of its current assessed value, but that was struck. Um uh from the uh the legislature um like ten years ago, and so we wanted to update the current ordinance to be in conformance with. Uh the state statute so that there wasn't any sort of potential legal action taken against us for denying. Um a remodel of a non-conforming use, or only stating that it'll be up to fifty percent when that's not the law anymore, so our office. Pretty much took the language of the current statute um and kind of copy and paste it and um. Eliminated all the uh references to any sort of cost limitation um related to that.
Any questions?
So um I have this on the plan commission agenda for Wednesday, uh also because it seemed from Hector's email that it has to go. To the plan commissions or approval to the village board um to set the public hearing. Right, so I put it on here that you could set public hearing conditionally on the plan commission approval.
Makes sense, get out ahead of it.
The same week, so I thought, yeah.
Save a month.
So should we just table uh item number fifteen?
I think what we're looking for is a conditional uh public hearing date set. Based on a an approval by the plan commission uh to accept the change and request a public hearing. We're we're horsing before the guard.
Okay, so then I would uh forward a motion to conditionally accept the recommendation of the legislative committee. For the ordinance amending section seven eight dash five three of the Village of Land and Code of Ordinances defining and regulating non-conforming uses, structures and lots. Heard the underlined and overstricken um draft as presented by legal counsel. Uh conditioned upon the setting of a public hearing by the recommendation of the planning commission. I do that, right?
We're looking to actually set the date.
Oh, okay.
So it's a thirty day notice, right, Brenda?
Um I think it's a fast to notice, so it could be at the next village board meeting.
But this class two, two weeks?
The eleventh of August?
Yep, they're opposite for, yeah. I was already in September. Yeah, August eleven.
So I amend my motion to uh propose a public hearing to um. To address this ordinance change on August eleven.
We have an amended motion, we have a second?
I have a second.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries, item sixteen, discussion possible action on payment of the bills.
I make a motion that we pay the bills as presented from rather early reading CD.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, I will just add that um. There was an additional uh requested amount for a late bill, uh that should be added to that to.
Two hundred and sixty nine dollars and twenty five cents from time access.
That's it. Do you care to amend that motion?
Yes, I will amend that, we paid the bills as presented with the addition of time access charge of two hundred and sixty nine dollars. And twenty five cents.
And you're second, Ms. Moore? Uh any other discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Engineers report.
I actually have two things. The televising has taken place on the interceptor, we haven't seen the televising record yet, but Sussex assisted in. Locating a couple of manholes um that had been buried, one of them was just off a main street in front of Bella Vista. So we're working with the developer there, he's all close to let them know that has to get reconstructed and raised. Um another one uh curiously was by um whiskey corners. It does not appear that it was due to any particular construction activity, but is. Somehow. Was buried, so um that particular manhole. It does not appear that there's a responsible party, so uh village, my recommendation is gonna be that the village just can move forward with. Getting a quote and authorizing a contractor to fix that one, because it's on the interceptor, all four member communities. Uh paid for those, I'll share. Proportionally, um but that's something, Dan, I'll reach out to you um to coordinate with following up on this meeting. But wanted everyone to be aware of that. Um the second thing I want to follow up on the generator at Whispering Ridge. Uh the condo association is agreeable to the location and working with the village to grant an easement and. Um however, the condo association requested a solid vinyl fence. Enclosure around the generator, rather than any type of landscaping to go around that, so I'm waiting for. Quotes to come back from the contractor, Jay Miller Electric, on what that cost is, my hunch is. It's not going to be cheap, um but nonetheless, I'll bring that information up uh when available.
Can't be talking about that much fencing, what is it, like fifty linear feet, maybe?
Probably, yeah. Maybe a little more than that.
Just three sides or four?
Four. Fence thin. With a gate, uh gravel on the inside. I'd be shocked if it's less than five thousand, I would be shocked if it's more than twenty. It's gonna be somewhere in there.
Like a weatherman, you just gotta get. My brain sometimes.
Why do you want the vinyl instead of of the trees because for aesthetics?
Yeah, so. They they were more concerned about security, they didn't want kids like going over there messing with it, even though.
There's been one there for twelve years.
So, yeah.
I would just think that that um trees instead would be more of a sound barrier. Than a vinyl.
Yeah, it's hard saying, I mean, trees are a cheaper option, not necessarily a better option, in my opinion. Um you know, you gotta deal with tree maintenance, et cetera, and I think that's kind of their perspective, and they're like just.
And honestly, when you have a an engine like that running in there, and you've got airflow going through their leaves. Pine needles, just debris is not a great idea.
I was just thinking of more sound.
Yeah, well, they gotta live next to it, so. I'm not gonna hear it from my.
I'm not gonna hear it from my house either.
My old one was right across the street, I would hear it.
Well, the security part is uh. Nice thing where it can be, as long as somebody knows where the keys are, because if you remember, the lift station. Was up and running for a week before somebody went over there and flipped all the switches on a. Friday night or Saturday, which created quite an issue a few years back. So I think the fence um long as the appropriate parties have keys.
That's it.
That's it. Attorney's report, nothing from us. Uh president's report, I will just say uh again, a reminder, the car show is coming up on the twenty seventh, I believe the day before. Bibbs and Vivs is having a pretty big celebration for the hundredth year anniversary, so it's kind of like a full weekend down there, so.
And on Sunday also, they're they're having the same music and the same thing of four days.
Okay, same same crew.
This coming Sunday?
No, the Sunday of the car show. Twenty six and twenty seven. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor? I, any opposed? Motion carries for adjournment.